...on some parcels, so I really appreciated that.
Thank you, absolutely.
So anyways, I'm just asking you to ratify this until we have our fire chief back on.
Any questions by the commission? If not, I'll look for a motion to accept the amendment for the demand and control structure.
Make a motion to approve the ratification.
Second by Lori.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate? unanimous? Page two, item four, discussion for possible action, the approval of the monthly financial reports for June 2021 as a final audited financials to be presented in December.
And these are, as I always tell you, at this time of year preliminaries only. We will continue to collect expenditures through the end of August and then issue the final audited financial data in December when approved those. If there are any questions, I'm happy to ask. Otherwise, I would just ask that you approve them as the preliminaries.
Any questions, Elizabeth? Gary Dunham, move for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Travis.
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Action none. And I forgot to mention, Commissioner Rodan is on Zoom, so I forgot to mention that at the start of the meeting, so he is available. Page two, item five, discussion for possible action, the approval of budget transfers within and between functions or programs within a fund that do not increase the total appropriation of the fund or adjust for approved grant slash agency funds. Elizabeth?
Thank you, and this is just making some few minor year-end adjustments to go ahead and true up line items. It doesn't impact the overall amount within the budget.
Any questions? I'll look for a motion to approve. Transfer?
Move to approve as presented.
Motion by Shane.
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Passionate? unanimous? Item six, discussion for possible action, the approval of the revised exempt pay scale as it relates to the increase in pay for the district fire chief slash emergency services position based on action taken at the June 23rd, 2021 county commission meeting. Elizabeth?
Thank you. At the June 23rd county commission meeting, the county commission noted to provide a three percent increase for the exempt employees. This includes the district fire chief slash director of emergency management services because we share this position between the county and fire district. They would ask that the fire commission approve this new as highlighted in your backup pay scale that includes that three percent increase.
Any questions? I'll look for a motion to approve. Motion by Ian.
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Passionate? unanimous? Item seven, this discussion for possible action, the approval of amendments from the special joint fire commission meeting held on June 9th, 2021, and the special joint held on June 23rd, 2021. Any additions, corrections, or subtractions?
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Passionate? unanimous? The last item we have in the fire commission meeting is public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone? Seeing none, is there any public comment in the building? Seeing none, we'll recess or we'll close the fire commission meeting, reopen the county commission meeting to page three, and the next item on the agenda is item B. It's a 9/15 timed item, we're behind of course, but it's discussion only regarding the possible amendments to the White Pine County 4.02, dealing with the gaming in White Pine County. Gary Correa.
For the Director, my name is Gary Correa. Thank you for allowing me to offer this amendment. I understand the process of doing an ordinance, and I understand the number of steps, so I wanted to get the ball rolling correctly here. Just to give a little bit of background, this ordinance was approved about five years ago when I was on the commission. At the time, because I was a commission, I had to recuse myself because it would affect my business, the border end. So I wasn't able to make comments, but this is my opportunity to make some comments, maybe make some changes to it. There's two areas that I'd like to change or offer as changes for this ordinance. The first one has to do with making sure that the grandfather aspect of this ordinance is clear. Right now, as far as I know, right now, the border end is the only unrestricted gaming licensee in the county excluding this city of U.A. And so basically, this ordinance, the grandfather clause in this only affects my business. It doesn't affect anybody else, as far as I know. So it's kind of a unique situation. Also, I want to make sure that it's clear that if the border end did sell, that that grandfather clause is transferable to the due owners. It's something that's pretty important to us. Anybody that is looking at maybe purchasing the border is going to be doing some investment. That was one of the main aspects, or the reasons for this ordinance in the first place, was that it was to stop somebody from, in the county, from just putting in more than 16 slot machines or getting inter-street license and then not making a major investment into the community. I think the border end, we have done that and we continue to do that. Right now, currently, we have 27 motels, but it's on the Utah side. We've got 20 RV spots that are on the Nevada side. We hire 22 employees. I mean, we're invested in the community, so it's not like we're just the gaming aspect of it. And this is what this clause, or this ordinance was trying to get to, was stopping somebody from just opening up a casino parlor and having 30 or 50 machines and not being a major investment. So I think in your back, if you have a copy of the ordinance, and then you have a copy of the proposed revisions for that ordinance. The last part that I'd like to address is the fact that giving a gaming license, it's not an easy process, and it's very time-consuming. Right now, with the gaming commission, it's projected that it would take somebody anywhere from a year to a year and a half to get licensed, to get the unrestricted gaming license to have more than 16 machines. And so what I'd like to do is to make sure that it's clear that if somebody came in and blocked the border, that they would have two years to get their unrestricted gaming license to be able to have more than 16 rooms, and that they would still be grandfather again. I don't know if the district attorney, if I explained it right, if he has something to add, maybe. But basically, I'm not trying to change the purpose of the ordinance, just to make sure that it continues how it was supposed to.
So, James, before you take off on this, before we get into discussion, me being an operator of a gaming establishment and holding a license where this affects just one establishment outside the city at this time, does this preclude me from...
I think this is an area where you should disclose that interest, but I don't think it puts you in any different position than it would any other hotel casino operator, so it wouldn't make you need to abstain.
Very good.
Does that make sense?
And I believe I have disclosed that interest.
Sure.
Okay.
That's the copo, just for the record.
Yes, yes.
So, right now, the way that the ordinance and the grandfather clause worded, if Mr. Correa was to sell the LLC, that clearly fits within the grandfather clause. If somebody wanted to create their own LLC by the property, by the establishment, then that would not fall within the grandfather clause. So I think when we did this, and I wasn't the civil attorney when this came in, but I have vague recollection of talking about this in the office when we were creating this, and I think what we were trying to, the goal we were trying to establish was not to destroy somebody's wealth that they've built by any ordinance. And so it's clearly a lot in the operate, but another way we can destroy his wealth is by greatly decreasing the resale value of what he had built over the years. So I think some amendment, this one just on the surface, looks fine. Obviously, there's no action to be taken. Today's is a discussion only, but there is a game mechanism to do it now, but it may not be the best mechanism for the parties involved. And I'm not sure. I haven't heard back from the attorney I was talking with, but this is something to consider if we want to bring it back to for a first reading and go through all the proper channels.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments. The other item is, you know, it has to do with the two years. That's pretty important. It's quite a process to get an under-streeted gaming license right now. And so, you know, if we could have the two years to give that person that ability to go through the licensing process, that way then I wouldn't have to be waiting for the two years, waiting for them to get licensed before the sale could go through. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Would you do that on, let's say we have a public hearing, would you add that amendment to it, that we go from a year and a half to two years? Would you do that, or how would that be?
Well, I think with the process, I think you would just advertise this, the first reading, you would put this language, if you agree with this language, you would just put it in as a proposed amendment. It comes to the first reading, then it gets approved.
Okay.
And so I would propose, unless there's any changes, I think this is good wording. I think it covers what we're asking to cover. And like I said, it doesn't change the purpose of the ordinance. It doesn't, you still have to have 30, anybody else, you still have to have 30 rooms, it doesn't matter. It's just the fact, this is a kind of a unique situation. Usually, you know, with an ordinance, you don't want to tailor it towards one business, but we're the only business that has the inter-street license in the county, so that's kind of what we're at.
And I think with the intent of what this ordinance was, I think it is really important that we do protect the one business and make sure that they're not adversely affected by this.
I agree.
So I just want to make sure everybody has, I know it's a process to get the ordinance, and you can come back and come back and go back. So I just want to start it on the right foot, make sure that there isn't any issues with the language, and we can move forward with this.
Anyone else got a comment or something for Gary? Thank you for coming.
I don't have any.
Who is this?
It's Travis.
Oh, Travis, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Travis.
Oh, I was just going to say, I don't have any issues with it on the surface, or it sounds like pretty straightforward.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
That being said, that was discussion item. Thank you very much. We're still on page three. We're moving to our 9/30 timed item. It's proposed ordinance is 520, 521, and 522. Item one is the public hearing discussion for possible action. The White Pine County border commissioners will take public comment and consider approval regarding the proposed ordinance 520, bill number 06.23.2021A, and ordinance amending title two, chapter 2.16 to allow for the county clerk to charge and collect an extra fee of $3 for the fighting of each and every marriage license. Nicole?
Yes, thank you. You've heard about this during the first reading. This came down as a bill that the legislature passed this summer, allowing clerks' offices to ask their commissions to enact an ordinance to institute this extra $3 charge. And the purpose of it is to go towards a technology fund that is accessible by the clerk's office for technology needs. And so in addition to this $3 increase in marriage licenses, the legislature also passed a $25 automatic increase, and that's already been instituted in our office. So this is going to make marriage licenses cost $88 after the publication runs for two weeks in the paper after your approval.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Does anyone in the public have a comment on what is being proposed? Seeing none, anybody on the commission? Okay. I'll look for a motion to approve the $3 increase in fighting. Is that good enough? James?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Passionate? unanimous? Item two is a public hearing also, discussion for possible action. The White Pine County border commissioners will take public comment and consider approval regarding proposed ordinance 521, bill number 06.23.2021B, and ordinance amending title eight to allow for the management of problems relating to the providing substance sustenance in a county park to a feral cat, feral cats, and/or any cats that have become a nuisance. Ross?
Yes.
Ross Smythe, by the way.
Thank you, Commissioner, and the commission. I wasn't here for the first reading. Do I have to read again the proposed ordinance?
This is essentially just to deal with the feral cat problem in the same way that we deal with a nuisance.
Do you have any questions? Basically, we had an issue with a feral cat community in one of the county parks, and the neighbors were upset about it, and so I contacted animal control. As a result, worked with James on getting something that proposed, and it's a $25 fine. It's a misdemeanor. If they're not given a, they're given a warning, and then after that, they have to pay a $25 fine per cat that they're feeding.
Is that per cat?
Yeah, per cat. So it could get pricey.
Yeah. Any question by anyone on the commission? This is a public hearing. Is there any question by anyone in the audience on this, or on the phone? Gary Dunham, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Shane.
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate? unanimous? Item three is another public hearing, discussion for possible action. The White Pine County border commissioners will take public comment and consider approval regarding proposed ordinance 522, bill number 06.23.2021C, and ordinance amending title ten to allow for the daily closure of all county parks from 10 o'clock, 10 p.m. to 5 o'clock, 5 a.m. on the succeeding day. Ross Smythe, deputy district attorney. Ross?
Again, this is the second reading of that ordinance. Worked with James and Scott, the sheriff, and the public works. We came up with a 10 o'clock to 5 o'clock shutdown time, basically, for the county park to be closed because of issues regarding noise and vandalism in the evening hours and disturbing the neighborhood. So they have to get a special use permit, which they had to before if they were going to basically take over a part of the park for a special event, and that would be run through Bill Calderwood or his designate. And then, once that's approved, if the sheriff did show up on a noise complaint or something like that, they could show that they were lawfully there at the park, having their permitted event. Typically, I guess, in the committee, sometimes they'll run past 10 o'clock with cleaning up some events and so forth, but I could see somebody coming in and complaining about noise or whatever. But if they do have a permit, they're okay. Or if they do get taken in, then the district attorney's office will deal with the issue as to whether they actually have a permit or not, if that becomes an issue.
Any questions by anybody on the commission? Then I'll look for a motion to approve the ordinance 522. Just public comment. Please, George, come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. I'm not against, I'm not against taking care of the vandalists. Those that are responsible for damage need to pay for it. I am against closing the park. What are you going to do, put a 10 o'clock curfew throughout the community? There are people in this community that aren't 21, they have nowhere to go. Where are they going to congregate? I got broken into again at the property I have. When there's item time, it causes problems. Put cameras in the park. You've got access to Wi-Fi, you can monitor either the public safety, I don't care where you do it, but not close down the whole town just because of a few radicals. They need to be held accountable. You need to send out a message that if you cause trouble like this, you will pay for it. So, let me ask you, have they been ordered to pay? Did they pay anything? Now, here we are, overreacting, in my opinion, shutting down everything. That's wrong. You addressed the problem. Don't come after the whole community just because of some malicious acts by a few individuals. I don't think you had problems like that before. At least, it wasn't brought to the public. Do not punish everybody because of the actions of a few. Thank you.
And the comment on that, 10 p.m. at night is plenty of time. If you have a party, a birthday party or something like that, and you can have anything, we just had very large events that carried over to 11 o'clock, thousands of people. But 10 o'clock to 5 a.m. is a period of time when people under the cloak of darkness can commit crimes, that's generally where they're at. We're not punishing the whole community. We're allowing the use of our parks, the county parks, for reasonable accommodation during a reasonable amount of time. A birthday party at 2 a.m. is not what I consider reasonable. So that's just my comment on what Mr. Chatch just brought about. We are not penalizing the community. Please, Ross?
Yes, one other thing I failed to mention was, it gives our office, our law enforcement officers probable cause to go in after 10 o'clock if there is an issue at the park and make contact and detain possibly, and sign or arrest if we need to, some of the violators. So at least, at the bare minimum, identify them and see who is in our parks late at night, who possibly could be suspects in vandalism in that park or other county parks.
Thank you. Anyone else got a comment on this? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve ordinance 522.
Move to approve.
Motion by Shane.
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further comment? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate? unanimous? We're on page three. We're trying to move along. Right now would be the 9/35 liquor board. I'll turn this over to the liquor board chairman, Sheriff Henry.
Before we start, I need to make a disclosure of this board that I totally knew I was on, and that is Michelle Beecher is on item one. She is my wife, so I will be abstaining from that item that I was totally planning on voting on.
Uh huh, okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Chairman. 9/35 a.m. liquor board, item D1, discussion for possible action, approval of an application for a liquor license to Michelle Costello Beecher from the Elite Cheer Boosters Club for the period beginning June 22nd, 2021, and ending June 24th, 2021, to be held at the Marriage Field. That liquor license was already issued, so I would look for a motion to ratify that.
Salute.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item D2 is discussion for possible action, approval of minutes from the liquor board, being held June 9th, 2021, and June 23rd, 2021. For motion to approve?
Motion to approve June 9th and June 23rd minutes.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Page three, we'll recess the regular county commission meeting for a special meeting in the White Pine County Board of Public Health, the Board of Public Health Officer. Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Call the meeting to order. We'll start with public comment, I believe. Any public comment on public health? Any online? Seeing none, we'll move on. Been asked to give an update on what's going on at the county. Maybe.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. More for the public. Please come if you want one. We'll just kind of set them around. Okay, so COVID, where are we at? It's heating back up, honestly. The Delta variant, I don't know how familiar everyone is, just background history, Delta variant came out of India, decimated India, crossed through Europe, Asia. It's currently the most tracked variant in the United States as we speak. That also includes Nevada. The Delta variant is predominantly here. In our county, in the last, oh, five days, we have nine active cases. We have six deaths, we have 630 people recovered. We currently have one person hospitalized locally for COVID-19. And so we are seeing an uptick in our cases, and we are trending, however, behind the other counties in our state. As you can look at the demographics that I provided, you'll see one, two, three, four, five, six counties in Nevada are flagged for elevated disease transmission. We'll probably not hopefully get there, I'm hopeful, but we are seeing the increase. Currently, in our county, we have 33% of our residents are vaccinated in the age of 18 and older. If you include the 12-year-olds and older in that group, 38% of our residents are vaccinated. It should be noted that the vaccines are effective. We are seeing breakthrough. Read an article this morning in Las Vegas Review that eight hospital employees, not current, our hospital, mind you, eight hospital employees down there attended a party over the 4th of July. All had been vaccinated, all developed COVID-19. They were exposed. So the vaccine, it's about 64% effective against this new Delta variant is what we're finding. So there is some problems with it. However, vaccine is still the most important way to protect our public. And so the hospital, I know, is starting to ramp up, and myself included, to try to encourage everybody in our county to become vaccinated. While we see breakthrough cases, one thing that you need to keep in line as a public health board is, it's 100% effective at keeping people off ventilators and out of the hospital. So that has still been proven. So we're excited, but at least it's preventing severe sickness in people. I welcome questions. I'm sure if you have questions. If you don't, that's okay too, but if you have questions concerning what's going on, or things you're interested in, or what we can do better, I'm happy to hear it.
Anyone?
Okay, I ran him aside. Public health, 4th of July was awesome. I thought our county did great. Those that felt like wearing masks wore masks, those that didn't, didn't. Those who were vaccinated, great. I just really think our county needed this. I look forward to continue to try to find opportunities that we, as a county, can be safe with our health, but also have some great activities. Like Delta Cluster Union was a great success. Fireworks were wonderful, things like that. I think it's important that we try to find a striking balance, which we've been doing with our public health and having great activities for our communities. I'd go ahead and move to item two, discussion for approval of the minutes from the April 7th meeting. Can I get, anyone to approve that?
Move to approve.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Bybee, seconded by Richard Howe. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we'll go back to public comments. Are there any public comment here or online?
I just wanted to say, I'm sorry, go ahead, George.
No ma'am, ladies first.
I just wanted, one of the things, I mean, I don't really have a health background per se, but I was a CNA. And one thing that I just really would encourage is, if you're in the grocery store, use those wipes. Use your disinfectant hand things. It truly, truly makes a difference.
Definitely does.
Nothing else. Nothing else do that.
I would agree. I would agree.
Keep putting your vehicle, and like I say, the handles, the grocery stores are notorious for spreading all kinds of stuff.
Definitely. Multiple-touch surfaces are a problem. I would recommend, a month from now, we break into this meeting. I don't think we have that on the agenda long here, just so we can get an update. If we are trending, we may hold it again, so if you have another chance. George, did you have something for us?
Yes, sir. The person in the hospital, are they local?
Yes.
How long have they been there, and how long have they had the symptoms or...
That's a great question. So I'm going to dance a little bit around HIPAA, but they've been there two days. I believe they've been ill three or four days. They are a local individual. So, and the other cases that we have are all locals. They're not out-of-towners. There are people here that have contracted it either through travel or contracted it from others that live here by association.
And what was the number again, six, nine?
Currently, there's nine active cases in our county.
Thank you.
Other comments, concerns? Seeing no jokes, I guess we'll call the meeting over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right now, because we're going to get into this, we'll have to... Right now, because we're gonna get into the snip of a discussion, we're gonna take a quick five-minute break, and then we'll come back to the 10:00 AM item, which is snipped, so let's just take a real quick break and move forward.
George, I know you like these, did you get one?
Thank you.
Officials that need to get back on some other stuff. And we're gonna go to page five, item one, item B1, this is gonna just be a 10-minute delay on the snip of a thing. So, page five, item B, elected officials, item one is Burton Hill Assessor, item A is discussion for possible action, ratification of Skyline Roofing Incorporated's contract for the roof replacement at the senior center.
Bert?
Oh, okay, we're doing that one first. So, we're, thank you, right, thank you, Chairman. So, we are trying to finish the senior center remodel project, and we were able to get the grant forward, we were able to get additional funds for it, some cost challenges that we had this last year. The last component that we need to do is to get the wood shake roof change to an architectural shingle roof, as approved by SHPO. We were able to, we had to go out to bid a couple of times, products of two-year, two-month projects, that we're almost two years into, it's, it never ends. But we got that responsive, responsible bidder within our budget. Bill Calderwood was unable to be here today, so he asked me to put this on the agenda item. We had to, we didn't have time, because the prices were going up as of July 1st. So we contacted the chairman, exploited to him, so we needed to sign that contract, and so this is to ratify, so we can get that senior center project remodel finished, finally.
Any questions by anyone on the commission?
Make sure we state to record the amount that I gave them an award.
Okay, it was for $134,500 to Skyline Roofing.
Good enough, wasn't it?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
I just like time, when, when, we, at the time when this project was started, and we didn't know if the, if the roof was going to be able to fit in the budget, I was, I don't know if you remember, I was very concerned about that. There's no point in putting a whole lot under, under a bad roof, so.
This really pleases me to see that this roof is gonna be able to be taken. And this should be at least 30 years.
Oh, yeah, this. Yeah, this protects the whole investment.
Anyone else? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Look to approve.
Motion by Shane.
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, none, passion animus. Item B, discussion for possible action. Approval of a transfer of the 2019 Jeep Ranger to maintenance for the use as a fleet vehicle. Transfer existing fleet vehicle of the 2004 Ford Expedition to Social Services and to surplus the existing Social Services 2004 Expedition.
Bert?
So I've got Desi here, she can vouch for, you know, her current vehicle, it is a wreck. I was, I had to borrow it. It was the former emergency management vehicle. We were, we needed to borrow it at some point last year for a week during COVID with some protocols that we needed to have in place, just the size, and I wouldn't recommend that anybody drives that car. And, so, the 2019 Jeep was transferred to the assessor's office, we had to, a little pick up the truck, we've been able to fast solve and fix. So we're up and running with our 2009 Silverado, we're happy, everything's good. So we had this Jeep that, you know, I believe would be a good fleet vehicle, and then the existing fleet vehicle, which was the former Nuclear Waste 2004 Expedition, would become, Social Services can use that, because that is in good condition.
Okay, any questions by any of the Commissioners? Any problem with this? Not, I'll look for a motion to approve the transfer. Motion by Ian.
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, none, passion animus. And the last item is, item C, it's a discussion for possible action, approval to move forward with the Community Services building concept, and you have a PowerPoint.
Yeah, yep, and Tabitha has that ready to go, and this is brought forth by Commissioner Carson, Elizabeth Francis, James Beecher, myself, Catherine Backdick, Martha Rivers, Sundalar, Desi representing Public Health and Social Services, and Bill Calderwood. We all worked together as a group to kind of come up with this presentation, and then trying to, you know, work in what we feel is the community and the county's best interest going forward. So we laid out here, do you want to start the slideshow, Tabby? And then, you know, bring this information forward to you guys. Yeah. And so, you should have all these slides, oh, in your backup, and then I assume people online, I think they can see that. So it's just, you know, you can read, it's a name of Community Services Building, it's a name that came up for this facility, we felt that it was appropriate. So meeting the community's needs for the next four years, so. And this one, you know, I'll let you, like, and it's in the backup, but, these are some of the comparisons of if we were to do this new facility where the annex used to be versus keeping the admin and using that, you know, kind of as is. We had a lot of pros on relocating those services back downtown. Again, if you have any questions throughout any of this, we're happy, one of us will have an answer. Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to chime in here, with moving it down closer to where the annex used to be, which is where Public Health and Social Services used to be, one of the main things we want to look on the Public Health side is, we want to get as much Public Health out into the community as possible. We are having a disconnect with the middle school to where we are currently located. When Public Health was down here and we were in the old annex, we had a lot of traffic in and out of Public Health all the time, they were right in the front of the building, so it was a quick in and out for the people that could come in. So with us being in East Ely, we have the high schoolers coming, but we don't have the middle schoolers because they're on foot, they don't have weight to get there, and with it being discreet, so I want to just add to the whole, the sooner I can get some people on Public Health, the more it saves all of our budgets in the long run. So I want to make sure to put that out to you guys to keep in mind, that if I can get younger people on services faster, it saves us years of money that we'll be helping these people. So please keep that in mind when you guys are looking at where you want to put this.
Thank you. Do you guys have any questions? Well, this is the busiest slide, the rest are a lot easier to read, but. So, this is the question, is where, who would go where? So, in the long run, we would have the, in the courthouse, historic courthouse, you can see commission, office chambers, finance, assessor, recorder, treasurer. IT would be able to move from the EOC, Station One, where it's being housed now, and be near the users. HR, a county manager, if, you know, if you have that position, future office needs. And that's an important concept for us, is, you know, if we need to move the building in planning at some point, if you wanted to add county public defenders, or, you know, you contracted, different contracts and they need space, right now, the admin building, there's just, I mean, there's, it's used, there's no, there's no additional space, and, and then for the community services, or if they were to stay in the admin building, you'd have Social Services, juvenile probation, Public Health, and then move the ELEE bus out of the operations from the EOC, again, moving it from out in the middle of the highway into where people are using it, so.
And one more, and that if I could just chime in.
Yes, I'm sorry.
R S V P, we still have them out at the airport, and they would be more centrally located.
So we didn't, we didn't include them, because they were, we thought of them, and we've talked about R S V P, but since they weren't an actual county, they're state-run, county-supported entity, we didn't include it on this presentation, but we definitely would like to see and would plan to try to have that. So this big question is, how do we pay for it? You know, everything comes down to money, and so, 1.86 million for the rescue plan, Social Services through her indigent.
My indigent fund.
Indigent fund, can pay a million plus, and then she's also identified some grants that, we don't know the amounts that she can apply for those to help with that facility. Capital Improvement Fund, it would be the bulk of 2.24 million. And then, net proceeds, you know, we can't anticipate, we don't know what they're going to be, but we can, we can say that, we know mineral prices for at least more than half of this current year, because that operates off the calendar year, have been at a higher level than in previous years. So we can anticipate, we can't really estimate though, but we, you know, we feel that we will have net proceeds, we just don't know how much yet, so. And then, there's gonna be money, as we're gonna get into, if we do this Community Services building, money saved by not paying rent for the recorder, treasurer, ELEE bus, IT, going forward, so. Any questions on that at this point? Then I've got a little more, the next slide, this kind of lays it out a little more precisely. And thanks, Elizabeth, got the information here. And so we have this, as, if you can see, if you see on there, the total estimated as of July 1st of this year, we have that money available to do this. So this is, this can be a bottom paid for facility for the future.
So with that, Bert, so when you go back to the previous slide, and you look, not counting capital improvement, this building right now, with the indigent funds and the American Rescue, is 60% funded. So the capital would be about 40%, but we have the 60% already.
So how it work, we, we could have this building, we talked with Bill Calderwood again on this, he's been involved with this process, 18, 24 months, we could have this building ready, moving in for the community services across the way here. And then, you know, it's next to the library, it's senior center, which, I mean, the whole centralizing services. So offices would move in from the admin building and the EOC into that, so Public Health, Social Services, juvenile probation, and ELEE bus. Again, those are, you're gonna have similar users of all these services, instead of having them in three places, now we've got them in one. And then, the recorder and the treasurer's office, this has been one of the biggest things, is, they have to go somewhere. Like, this is not a question of if, it's just when, we've got to move. Well, they could move, they've been able to look at the, Catherine and Martha have been able to look at the space that would come open in the admin building, and, you know, especially on a temporary, couple of year thing, they can make that work. And so then, we would have all those interconnected offices finally back together, and because currently, you know, treasurer and finance deal a lot with each other, I deal a lot with the recorder and treasurer, we're not even in the same building, and vice versa, we're across town. Then, once the construction is done, the rehabilitation and or renovation of the historic courthouse, we would all move from the admin building into the courthouse. So what happens if we don't build it? Well, everybody would stay right where they're at. I mean, this doesn't affect, you know, me, it doesn't affect Elizabeth, kind of one iota, because we know we're gonna be in the admin building until we're in the historic courthouse. It's going to affect the treasurer and recorder, it's going to affect these other offices, are they gonna stay in the admin building, or are they gonna move to a new building? So, everyone but the recorder and treasurer stay where they are, and then, what happens to them? Well, we have two options. The first one is, definitely, the recommended one is, they need to move quickly, like, in the next couple of months, if we can find adequate office space. And the reason for that is their, their needs are so specific, that if we wait for a year, two years, and then, like, we have to move them at that point, we may not have any place to move them to. Again, because of those specific needs, the vaults, it'll be on here, are a huge challenge. And so option two is, they could stay until the actual construction of the courthouse starts, and then we have to hope we can find something. And that could delay the courthouse project if we can't find anything, so. So then, go to the next slide, so where do they go? They have to relocate into office space in the city of Ely, which is where majority of office space is gonna be had, but it has to be in the county seat. Then, they have to have space that fits their needs, that's the real challenge. And if we build a Community Services Building, it gives you adequate space in an existing county building, so you're not paying any rent, your renovations will be, I guess, I think would be more moderate, we've kind of mapped out some ideas on there. This allows for these interconnected offices to be together. And this is what I was alluding to earlier, is they both have vaults whose contents have to be protected, obviously, gotta have the cache protected, but it's not, that's a smaller version, it's the recorder's office has such a large record storage that you have to have in that, those vaults, but, and it's not just that we can, we have to lock it up, we have to be able to use that information. People are coming in to do research, to look up information, they're looking up information for people. So it has to be accessible as well. And what's that renting office space gonna be? Elizabeth was able to get, we found one possible place, it would need to have some renovations done to the building, but we'd look at 126, 210,000 for a three to five-year period. This isn't a final number, these were just some estimated numbers that she got. And then.
For a year, for a total?
Total, for a three to five-year period. That's the, just an estimate on that.
That doesn't include, though, rent of the renovations.
No, no renovations are included.
And you have to have renovations for a temporary usage.
Correct, yes.
And hope, hope that the owner lets us.
Yeah, and then we would also, along with that kind of renovation, we'd have to, this is outside my wheelhouse, with the phone, the IT connections, because we can't just, you know, hook into.